Call of special media, ISE 361, school board to order. Roll call, Tony Corpey, Emily McDonagall.
Here.
Bruce Raborn, here. Ted Saxton, here. Roxanne Costa Beach.
Here.
Joanne Smith.
Here.
Jennifer Windows.
Here.
Kevin Grober, here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So move.
Second?
Motion by Rockstar, second by Emily. Any further discussion? I guess only the Rockstar stuff right before the meeting, not everybody was going to get those. The special meetings related to COVID, so that's what we'll keep our conversation to. Any further discussion? If it is done, all of them favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries unanimously. Discussion, working session, topic number one. COVID update and discussion.
And I'm just gonna pull up a, give me just one second. Hasn't, if the group hasn't seen, starting off with our numbers, which are, I'm gonna say going in a, I want to say a positive direction, a good direction. This is the elementary, as of today. There is zero cases active at the elementary. There's 10 people quarantined. So, I mean, that's from day one. You can see the graph, I'm gonna scroll down to the high school. There's one positive case, active case, 11 people quarantined, or I should say 12 people. I think there's one staff right here, these are doubled down here. But there's only one positive case right now. One staff member out and 11 students. So, from where we were two weeks ago, things are much better. Again, it's just a glimpse in time. Tomorrow, things could start changing and going in a different direction, which we hope not, but we still do struggle, though, I'm just gonna be honest with you. Staff, filling the subs is very tough right now. I mean, whether it's teachers, paras, you name it across the board. You know, the number of people, and I thank those included in the room, the sub, I mean, it's a lifesaver right now. It hasn't jumped back to, I'm not saying we ever had a plethora of subs, but there's, you know, still a chunk of people that aren't interested with, you know, maybe as our numbers come down a little bit, that will, you know, hopefully change, but we have struggled. We've struggled, we've had paras in classrooms numerous days. So, even though we don't have many staff out, filling with the day-to-day stuff that is also going on, has been tough, so I think that's a good sign. I'm just gonna ramble through a variety of things here, and then I'll let Tim speak. We are in the homecoming week, he can hit more on that. If you are, I'm gonna talk about a variety, including down below. Our S R application is in, and again, it's in to hold a place, is all it's in. And that's what the majority of districts have done, because we do have a variety of more work that has to happen to fully fill out. In other words, they're looking for more, and we got some clarification. They use the terminology of a needs assessment. You know, it's not just so much, yeah, we can spend it on PPE, but they wanna know why now. Why hasn't, you know, S R 1 and 2 covered that. But they're looking at more, what are you doing for students, staff, community? Whether it's building-related, whether it's educationally-related, they want some info behind, and they also want some info on, how are you gonna track whether this makes a difference? You know, because this can go, keep in mind, over two to three years. And so, that is a piece we are gonna work on, figuring out, they want community input, they want community meetings, they wanna know who was there and who said what, so to speak. Not meaning that the loudest group necessarily gets their way, but they want info that, you know, we're just not choosing and saying, Project A, whatever Project A is. And again, we maybe will say Project A, or whatever that is, but they wanna, they want you to go through the steps, and so, that will come in the next bit of time. And that's a piece that I wanna have a little conversation, and it doesn't have to be solved tonight, that if we are gonna hold some, I'm gonna say, community conversations, I wanna know if that needs to apply, or should apply, with our strategic plan as well, if we can kinda double-dip and hit things, you know, at the same time, not necessarily do this, and then, you know, two weeks later, be trying to pull another, you know, group in to ask some similar questions, because some of it, some of it I see being very hand-in-hand, at least short-term. So, the good part, there were two applications that are in, and like I say, some of it is overlapping, but it was more of a, I'm gonna say, hoop at this point to jump through, and we're through the holding of it. But we have to decide, like I say, long-term, what we want, as well as what the public wants, and, you know, come to, I'm gonna say, an agreement, and a plan for the next, just say, several years on what we're gonna do with that. And if you recall, it's in the ballpark, ballpark of a million and a half dollars that is sitting there, not kinda spoken for, as we somewhat spoke for it earlier. Remember, we had S R 1, S R 2, and S R 3, all the pots put together, and we have some placeholders for a variety of things over the next three years, but when that's done, significant money. And the other piece of that million and a half, about $600,559 or something, I forget the exact number, is technically for, I'm gonna say, education outside of the school day. So, summer programming, before school, after school, and Tim and Missy and I will chat some more about that tomorrow, we have some ideas, but that's, I'm gonna say, significant money. $600,000, you know, like on a summer school program, that is a ton of money. Over three summers, it's a ton of money, you know, and so, I think we're gonna have to be creative and think there's a lot we can offer, just like, you know, last summer. I mean, it was completely free, everything we did last summer was completely free, and the amount of money we spent was pretty small, okay? I mean, just being honest, you know. So, get our minds going, but we also gotta make sure it's well-planned out, it's meeting the needs of what, I'm gonna say, the data shows, you know, and, and again, it can be educational, but it should also be some fun activities, you know, I mean, you can do some, I don't know what you call it, summer trip, so to speak, you know, doing some activities, but we just gotta have a little more time, we have the time, where last summer it was pretty, I don't wanna say thrown together, it was, what we did was well-done, but we didn't have much time, you know, it's to be creative, or to be too creative, so. That'll be coming down the pike, once we get a few more ideas, and again, I'm open, but we gotta get kinda some assessments, and what we wanna ask, and how we wanna ask it, and that type of stuff figured out, before we say we're holding this, you know, a week from now, you know, so just give us a little bit of time, we'll get there. Questions on that, to this point?
Yes.
Yep?
The, when you said that it has to meet the needs of what the data shows, now which data are you referring to?
You know, for instance, for me, and I'm just gonna use a building case, you know, like we had a needs assessment, if you wanna call it that, a building study done, was it two years ago? For instance, the pool has an air quality issue, not meaning the sunstake, but it needs to be addressed at some time. You would need something like that assessment to show why we wanna spend, and air quality is one thing you can spend this money on. If we just wanted to say we wanna add on to the school, 'cause we need more space, that's probably, maybe it would pass, but they're looking not much for buildings and stuff, unless it's air quality. So you have to have some data to show.
Right. Do you have other pieces of data for other things that we might need, or do we still have to get?
Some of it we have to get, and we could pull, for instance, like, they've done STAR testing for the fall. You know, you could take and use that data to show, you know, how kids are doing, you know, that's just one piece, there's other types of assessments, you know, the number of failures, that's kind of how we pulled the kids in Oxford Summer School last year, was based on kids that were struggling. As the year goes on, I'm just talking mental health, you know, we're gonna be creating that as it goes on, so to speak, but there are other ways, and some of it probably is gonna be a survey, or, you know, some, they want, it's a requirement to have some public meetings to, you know, listen, you know, what is the community, but again, and it's very broad, it's really stuff that's affected COVID, and I mean, that's widespread from masks are from, an obvious, easy answer, I mean, if we wanna put, we need more masks, we can put that in, and there's not much we have to show on that, but most of that stuff has been taken care of, you know what I'm saying, over the last year or two. Yeah, we might need a little more, you know, as time goes on, but when you're looking at programming, you know, for instance, say I wanna do Saturday morning school, I'm just picking something, they wanna know why, you know, and how are you gonna measure that it's making a difference, and what is your focus, and so that's, some of that we have to come up with.
And our, when we come up with some of it, like, some of the meetings, certainly we would like to have meetings in a variety of ways, but I'm hoping that part of it can be via Zoom, because there's still some people who just do not wanna come to a meeting, but probably should be heard.
Well, and I'm guessing unless we change something, I mean, we're still, this meeting right now is being Zoomed, so yeah, whatever, I assume.
Thank you.
Other questions at this point, otherwise, I mean, I let Tim talk about homecoming and some of that right now, and then a few more things.
Okay, well, as Kev mentioned, we do have homecoming this week, and we're trying to do as many of the activities in a normal fashion as possible, so we've got the dress-up days all week. On Wednesday, we are gonna have the powder puff football and the Peach Buzz volleyball, and we're gonna start the volleyball at 6:30, from 6:30 to 7:30 in the gym, and then we're gonna go down to the football field at 8:00 and go 8 to 9 with the powder puff football. So, in the gym, students will be required to wear masks, when there's spectators, when they're competing, they won't have to, once we get down to the football field, no one will have to wear a mask down there. The football game, well, Pep Fest is on Friday, and it's scheduled for seventh period, but it sounds like it's gonna go a little bit longer, so we'll get down there in sixth. Sixth period is gonna be in the arena, it's gonna be for grades 10, 11, and 12, and we are gonna have a section for parents to come, because we'll have the grades getting, with the coronation getting crowned. So we'll have section for 10th, 11th, 12th, the band, and parents, and everyone will be masked at that, at the Pep Fest, and then the game is on Friday night, and then on Saturday, we've got a dance, and the format changed up just a little bit. We're going to have two separate dances, like we had said before, instead of splitting it into 9, 10, and 11, 12, we are just splitting it in half, and we have so many seats, I think they're allowing like 125 or 130 in each of the dances. It's gonna be first come, first served to sign up, and they were supposed to start with ticket sales today with seniors and juniors in the C lunch, and the thought was that juniors and seniors are gonna be more apt to sign up for the second dance, and then they will start tomorrow during A lunch, selling to the ninth graders, and then, I guess actually, the 10th, 11th, and 12th are, most of those are in C lunch, so they had opportunity to buy tickets today. We are not allowing students from outside the district. This way, we are accommodating students if they have a date who is in a grade other than 11th or 12th, so if the, we have a junior who has got a ninth grade date, they can potentially get into the second dance, or a dance together. We have five chaperones, so we are in dire need of more chaperones. Hopefully, parents, maybe somebody in here will be willing to come and chaperone at the dances. Everyone's gonna be required to wear their mask, will be in the arena. You know, we're gonna try to keep people as distant as possible, but we'll have 125 kids in there, and we, you know, work hard to keep kids, keep masks on, so if anyone is able to come, we are really in dire need of more chaperones. School-wise, I think things have been going well in our classes, lunches seem to be going well, kids are eating and then getting into the gym, so we're keeping them spread out that way. Kids are pretty good about wearing masks, we continually are reminding kids to pull them up, they let them fall down. We are finding that the cloth masks that we got last year stretch out, and it's harder for the kids to keep those up, so we've got a lot of these disposable masks that we're handing out, and there's the wire pinch piece by the nose, so that allows them to keep it up a little bit easier, but I think for the most part, kids are really good at it at school. Any questions? Just talk to me afterwards if you wanna sign up for that room.
And the, and I don't know if everyone, I think everyone, these board members got, I did come up with a plan with Missy over at the elementary for kinda watching the playground, no difference, and I didn't, I just thought of it now, I saw two masks laying outside the front entryway here, you know, something we just have to work on. You know, you get all the kids out, like at lunch, we had a complaint that there were, I don't know how many masks, but, you know, it didn't look good on the elementary. Missy wasn't really aware, she said she's been out there, you know, but I'm not saying there aren't times that, you know, they're gonna try and have a, I'm gonna say a cleanup, yeah, you know what I'm saying, and keep it picked up, no different. I picked one up in the hall today, you know, it's just gonna be, I don't know how you lose your mask, but, you know, I suppose they drop it, and they've got another one in their pocket, and away they go, and don't pick it up, I don't know, but I'm just saying, and, you know, a lot of the elementary, and they did order a few more lanyards, they've had lanyards available, you know, a lot of the kids have them from last year, but they did run out now, so they're gonna get some more. It's just gonna be an ongoing, you know, I don't wanna say struggle, but something we're just gonna have to work collaboratively on to keep, because, yeah, masks, I mean, there are many articles in paper, newspaper columns, or whatever, written on, you know, they affect these masks on our environment long-term, because, yeah, I mean, I cleaned the ditch this fall, and we picked up plenty of them, you know, so we'll keep on that, and it is what it is. One piece, and I just wanted to clarify, because some of you have seen it, and I had one comment, we have posted a position for, I'm gonna call a COVID tester, I talked to you a little bit at the board, it was the last two weeks ago, or whatever. The state has provided us with tests, I actually walked in my office right now, there are, there's a plethora of tests, we got Q tests, they're different brands, there's a Q test, they're all nasal, nasal swab tests, they're all rapid tests, there's a BioNax, I wanna say it's BioNax, it might not be the right term, now professional, and that's if you're symptomatic, so that group is for the nurses, if I came down sick right now at work, and I went, you know, Leah, I gotta go, I think, as long as I consent, and there's gonna be a form, parents would have to consent, you know, they could, we could test kids, but it's a different test if you're symptomatic compared to if you're asymptomatic, so. And then the third one that was provided is, and we're still waiting, they're not all here, and they're working on kinda the verbiage and the stuff to send home with it, but there's a third one that every student is gonna get to take home, kinda like the saliva test last year. I don't know how it exactly works, but you do the nasal swab, and it has, I think, one line if you're negative, and two lines somehow, it changes, you know, it's, I don't know if this is a good comparison or not, 'cause I've never personally done this, but like a pregnancy test, where, you know, you activate and use it, and it tells you the results, but families are gonna have those, so that if a kid's at home on a weekend, or whenever, and they start becoming symptomatic, and it might just be the cold, but they can test, you know, and we can replenish that, but it's supposed to be if you're symptomatic, it's not, you know, or it's more accurate, I don't, I'm not the medical person, so we have those, we're waiting on a bunch of them, 'cause they're not all here. And so, we have posted, we have the money for, from the state to do that, and so, we're looking, or start at a person two days a week, most likely one day in each building, or we've talked, depending on who it is, you know, and what their schedule is, maybe we can do two mornings in one building, two mornings in another, you know, type deal, so a little more availability, but that's what we're gonna have available. As far as economical, you know, like I say, the tests, they're no cost to us, and as far as the money to pay the staff person, we have, we have $40,000, and we're, you know, unless it just goes hot wild, where we need someone five days a week, you know, or more than one person, we should be just fine, but I don't, I would love it to be that way, when I say everyone willing to test, because we're gonna have testing available once a week, I think it is, for anyone that wants staff or students, because, you know, that's part of the process, catching asymptomatic, you know, people that are walking around and don't know they have it, so I don't know if there's questions on that, again, that will come to the board to hire whoever it is, but we did, we did post it and open it and get the process rolling, unless the board has a feeling differently, but to wait, we did, go ahead, Rox.
Okay, now, are all the tests that you just talked about, the ones that you'll get the results right away?
They are all rapid tests.
They're all rapid?
But they're, like I say, and Jen, you could maybe help me better, you, but for some reason, there's a BioNax now and a Q test, and I guess I could've had Leah here, but one is better if you're just, I mean, if you're symptomatic, the one is more accurate than the other one that is meant to be more if you're, you know, you don't have symptoms, you just wanna, you know, test on a week, but, you know, it'll, I don't know what the difference is.
And the families that will have them, you'll send them home to families?
Every family, unless they, you know, don't want it, is, we ordered enough for one for every student to start with, and we can get more.
And that's the rapid one, too.
And that's a rapid, and again, you know, there's instruction, there's gonna be literature that goes with all of them on how to do them, they're not like the saliva test where you had to, you know, zoom in or whatever with someone, it's, you know, I'm sure there's a question line if you had questions and needed some instruction or something like that, but it's getting that put together, and hopefully within, well, we, what's happened is we've, and I don't know why, I ordered it minutes apart, and we've gotten, there's, you gotta do it by building, so we've gotten some elementary stuff, some high school, but not all for both buildings, and I, like I say, it just boggles my mind, and it came, most of it, most of it was here Wednesday or Thursday last week, and I keep thinking, where's the rest, you know, and so it'd be nice to be able to, okay, the ones that are going home, you know, get messaging out for both buildings, all kids, and send them, so the parents know they're coming and can expect them where, and they are linked to the building, so we do need to kinda honor where they're going, they're coded, you know, for that building.
And then I have two other questions. The tester position, what kind of background requirements?
It's preferred to have a medical background, but it's not a requirement, they can be trained, you know, so we're, like I say, preference given, and I didn't bring it up here, it's posted out there, I mean, we'd love to have a, you know, an RN or an OPN or, you know, but it's not a requirement, you know.
And the last one is, you said that, that Leah could test kids in school with parent consent, and are you going to send a form home for a general consent, or are you going to have some way for parents to sign on, say, Leah calls them and says, email me your answer that you can, that I can test them, or how are you gonna do that?
My gut is, it's probably gonna be individual, and either, you know, either it would be, hey, the kid's sick, you're gonna have to take him home no matter what, you're coming, you know, and the parent can sign it at that point, they can watch it, I'm just thinking, because if the person's ill and needing to go home, and even if it's, you know, I'm hacking, but it's not COVID, I'm not supposed to be here, you know, so our thought, at least originally, was not to, you know, send everyone home, please sign if you're willing, because I guess I wanna know if Ava's being tested, I mean, we will allow it, but we should know, hey, she's sick, under the weather, you know, especially, you know, the younger ones, and I'll be honest, she's had it done a couple times, and not a big fan, you know, and so, I mean, I'd want the parent, you know, to probably be here, and, you know, maybe if they're, you know, 17, 18, you know, but most, it's meant to be if they're ill and under the weather, so I would think, maybe if it's a kid that can drive, you know, maybe we could have a parent, yeah, shoot me an email, you know, here's the form you're signing, you know, have it electronic, but, and again, like right now, hopefully it's not too many, but, you know, as, you know, illness, just plain regular illness, if we have, you know, more of that than we did last year, it might be more than we think, but, you know, we're thinking, like I said, a day a week in both buildings, whether it's two mornings, two afternoons, whatever, unless more participate than they did last year, that would be plenty of time.
Well, I'd just like to say that Leah was very helpful for me, when we had a scare, not a real one, but she was extremely helpful, I was so pleased with how supportive she was on all of my questions and how to do everything.
The other piece, and I'm just gonna say, I hope the person is just swamped in testing, not because we have sick people, I'm just talking asymptomatic people that are just willing to test, but the flip side is, if the person is not kept fully busy, that's the plan that they can help, you know, the two nurses, because when we do, you know, you don't realize, but making 20, 25 calls, you know, and explaining things to people and answering questions, it takes time, and there's other, you know, they got medications that they do on a normal database, there were times, last week, we went a couple periods, we didn't have either nurse, you know, and so that's the other, you know, possible plus of getting someone in, and if they're here at work, and again, you know, if testing isn't swamping on that day, and again, I say that, meaning it's a good thing, 'cause it doesn't mean we have positive cases, it's just mean, you know, there's maybe some other things that they can help with, you know, at the same time. Other thoughts, questions on that? So that'll be coming as quick, like I say, for the most part, as quick as we can, but we're still waiting on some items, you know, and they said, you know, they said typically two to three weeks, it's been about a week and a half, so I'm guessing we're gonna see this stuff, but, like I said, someone popped here within about three days, and it's like, wow, you know, but we'll see. COVID-wise, any other questions, concerns, I mean, that's really, I mean, things are moving in a, I mean, like I say, I don't wanna speak on behalf of the teachers, but, you know, looking at the elementary, there's, I think, 10 cases, I mean, that's about one in three, I didn't pull the group, you know, the names of the kids and see if any classes had doubled, but that's a good case, you know, good place right now, you know, and hopefully it'll only get better, you know, as far as teachers that are having, high school, there's 11 kids, so I mean, yeah, most teachers are gonna have to be zooming part of the day, but, you know, it shouldn't be every hour, every class, so, you know, hopefully workload, you know, that's helping. On COVID-wise, I just, I have two other things just to throw at you, again, one, I'll just throw them at you. We haven't updated, for the new board members, there's a place, whether you know it or not, that the board members are listed on the webpage, and we should get a picture, the last group, I think we took them downstairs in the cafeteria, there's a logo or an emblem. And the second thing, which I didn't realize until, I don't know, a month ago or something, Tim came in and needed Bruce's number, or someone wanted it, is, before going to the new website, we did have a contact info, and I guess, before I put someone's number on there, I want each of your, you know, permission, do you want a home number, do you want a cell number, I mean, if someone doesn't want a phone number listed, I don't think there's anywhere in law that we have to, you know, and like I say, so, I would just like to, like I say, touch base, if someone doesn't, I mean, you have your school email on there.
I think that there might be something in law that says you do have to have a cell phone number listed.
Well, not.
I'm not positive about that, but that's.
A phone number.
Yeah, a phone number, it doesn't have to be cell phone, but it has to be some number for.
I will look, I'm not aware, because, I mean, you could technically run for office and not have a phone, you know, I don't think they would, and again, it's a good practice, I don't think, and let's just be honest, I don't think too many people get bombarded, you know, now when things hit the fan, maybe you would get a call or two, but even my number is public, and it's on, I get a few called, you know, not a ton, you know, but people will find you when you're bombarded, no matter what, to be honest, but, so I am gonna, like I say, reach out to each of you, eight, and I can give you advance, we just sometimes should take a picture, you know, whether, not saying you have to have a suit and tie, whatever you want, you know, and it's just a headshot, you know, type deal, and get that put on, and then, like I say, the contact info. The second thing is, we talked about, and I'm just fine, but I just wanted to mention it, 'cause it was on here, Bruce, Emily, and Jen are working on kinda word, verbiage on the goals, so that'll be coming, hopefully by the 18th. So that'll be coming hopefully by the 18th. It wasn't ready for tonight, so I'd thrown that on there, but it's not ready. So that is what I have. Unless others have questions, like say, majority should be on COVID or whatever, or those other items that were listed.
The only thing that I'd like to comment on is that it's crazy how many, what the numbers ended up being. It's great to see that they're down, but how many people are sick without COVID? You know, I've seen a huge rise in that and we talked about it, that the negotiations a little bit like that too. But my whole family, we all got sick and all got tested and not a single person had COVID.
Yeah, and what did?
Must be some kind of catchy cold that's going around. So, but in our case, you know, we, you still got to stay home. My kids are excited that they didn't have COVID, but really, still can't go to your cross country meet.
Yeah, and I forget what Leah told me. Technically, it's floating around and going wrong. But yeah, it's a, there's stuff moving around. I'm not saying as normal. Last year, I think we, I'm missing out lucky and didn't seem to have much of it. But it's the early, early fall cold or whatever you want to say. But again, Leah and, well, staff in general, I think, have been very, very good. Leah and Randy take on a brunt of stuff dealing with this. But from secretaries to administration to teachers, I mean, everyone's been really good about working, about asking questions, you know. We try to get answers and answer and work through. And I'll be honest, I think, you know, the majority of families have been good. I mean, I had a conversation with, and again, it deals with COVID, but, you know, a person having a question and they understood, they understood where we're coming, you know, they just wanted to be heard, you know, and that type of thing. So right now, again, knock on wood, it keeps going in the direction it's going. But to be realistic, you know, we're probably going to have little road posters as time goes on. And again, I don't, I'm not going to ask the question. We'll see where we are down the road, you know, as far as, because I still get asked, is board going to talk about, you know, letting masks be optional? And I think, you know, again, just my thought, the county data and even, you know, the other data is not to a point where I would, I guess personally, think we should start the conversation, you know. But that's probably the question I get the most, especially these things.
Right now, the national news is saying Minnesota is still a total non-state.
No, I'm with you, but I'm just being honest and upfront that, you know, we'll see how things go. Whether it's two weeks, a month, you know, we'll see where we're at. And because I don't, I don't think we're going to say, no, we're not going to ever talk or relook at it. I mean, the stance might stay the same, but at some point.
Well, that's why we're here. I think that's why we have these extra meetings is to constantly be updated and to let the public know that we want to make sure that we're looking. And if, if things remain good, I think we should have that conversation too. But we just need to always be informed and see how things are going and discuss it, so.
Does anybody have anything else they'd like to bring up relative to that agenda?
We didn't put it on there, but a motion to adjourn in the second.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, 535.
So.
That motion by Jen, do you have a second? Second, second by Bruce. Any further discussion? All of the favors, signify by saying aye. Aye. opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all.